City of West Sacramento. Per tradition, we always begin with the Pledge of Allegiance. And I'm going to just pause just one moment before we do the Pledge of Allegiance while folks are sitting down. If there are any requests to speak to the Commission this evening, please note that the Request to Speak forms are listed over there on the side credenza and just bring them up to Katie prior to the end of the staff report for that item. Thank you. And so, again, per tradition, we begin with the Pledge of Allegiance and I am going to ask Mr. Kelter to begin.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, unuttered, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. This evening, there are four items on the agenda. And again, if anyone wishes to address the Commission, please fill out a form on the side table over there, it's a small form, and hand it to Katie prior to the end of the staff report for that item. First item on our agenda is presentations by public matters not on the agenda but within jurisdiction of the Commission. The Commission is actually prohibited from, by law, from discussing issues that are not on the agenda but brought to the Commission, but this is your opportunity to address the Commission. So at this point, I have no, no request to speak on items not on the agenda. Correspondence and staff communications from Planning Commission Secretary, Mr. Tilly?
Yes, thank you Chair Leibig. A few items to note for the Commission this evening. In front of you, you should have two items of correspondence, a memo from Senior Planner Justin Hardy regarding Agenda Item Number Three and some potential modifications to the recommended conditions. And then you should also have an invitation in front of you to an upcoming AEP event in front of you. Further notice, last night at council, the City Council did take up some matters related to the water restrictions that we've had in our community, and they delegated some authority to the City Manager to implement the specifics of that, which is, which is still pending. And they also took up a matter related to the Stone Lock property, which we anticipate coming to the Planning Commission also very soon. And then lastly, I'd like to, happy to announce that as of July 1, Katie Rogers was reclassified into a planning technician, and so we're very happy about that. She will continue in her role here with the Planning Commission, but she did receive, received that reclassification and it was well deserved. So with that, I'll close my remarks at this time.
Thank you, David. Congratulations, Katie. At this time, we need to discuss, sorry, disclose ex parte communication. Planning Commissioners should disclose any communications they had with applicants on agenda or non-applicants. Seeing head nodding? No. Okay, moving on to the consent agenda. There's one item on the consent agenda, it's simply the meetings from the May 21st meeting.
Motion approved.
Second.
Moved by Mr. Sternfeld, seconded by Ms. Tomber. All in favor? Abstentions?
Abstain as well.
Bernadette and Martha. Please, approval please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Regular agenda, item number two, Public Hearing Regarding Resolution 12, sorry, 15-2PC regarding an amendment to zoning ordinance in the waterfront zone. Ms. Allen.
Good evening Chair Leibig and members of the Planning Commission. This item concerns a proposed change to the zoning ordinance to remove fueling stations as a permitted use in the waterfront zone. Waterfront zone is primarily located in Pioneer Bluff and the Bridge District, and since 1990 Pioneer Bluff has been planned for urban uses and is in the early stages of transition from primarily industrial uses, which have historically been located in that area, to more urban uses. In November 2013, the City Council held a workshop on the Pioneer Bluff transition and gave staff direction and scope for a Pioneer Bluff transition plan. Staff worked on the plan throughout 2014. The Council also identified that as one of their top priority items on this 2014 strategic plan. One of the recommendations of the transition plan, which the Council approved in December 2014, was a revision to the zoning ordinance to prevent land use inconsistencies with future Pioneer Bluff development. And because of that, it was recommended that fueling stations be designated as a non-permitted use in the waterfront zone. So if the zoning ordinance change for this item is approved, the one existing fueling station in the waterfront zone would become a legally non-conforming use. It would be allowed to stay and remain open. It just would not be able to be expanded. This concludes my presentation. I'd be happy to answer any questions. If you have any questions pertaining to the transition plan, Aaron Laurel and Rick Toft are also here in the audience and they can speak to that. Thank you.
Thank you, Kathy. Before I open up the public hearing, are there any questions of staff?
You know, actually, I don't care which way you go.
I'll go with the loud one first.
The loud one. I'm kidding. The loud one has a question for you. Did we review, I couldn't find my book that said whatever use that was permitted currently? Is this the only use that you found that we have a problem with, or should we have looked in general to all the uses?
You mean what the transition plan spoke to?
Yeah.
As far as I recall from reviewing it, I believe this was the, the one use that was called out.
Okay. I was just curious if there was anything else we should do it all at one time was all.
Sure.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks, Charlie. Alex?
Just curious, Kathy, if the definition of fueling station is specific to hydrocarbon fuels, or could it inadvertently have any effect on, say, electric vehicle recharging
It appears to, it was written quite a while ago, and so I believe the intent at the time was, as you say, for the carbon, hydrocarbon stations.
Yeah, we did expand that definition a few years ago to try to capture a broader range of fuel types, because it used to just be called gas station. And so, but we, an electric vehicle charging station, we would, you know, treat differently than a retail, you know, fueling facility regardless of the, you know, fueling, you know, fuel type. So this facility out here does have hydrogen in addition to regular gas and diesel.
Thank you.
Okay, oh, I'm sorry, Ms. Tomber.
So recently, we discussed proposed bridges, and I believe there was going to be a bridge on that end of town that's supposed to be built. Is that correct?
Are you referring to the Mike McAllen Bridge, or are you referring to a different bridge? Oh, the Broadway Bridge.
Over the river on that side of town.
The one at 15th Street, yeah.
Yeah, that's the one. I just wanted to know, I just, I just, I understand the purpose of this and I certainly agree with it, but I was just thinking that if we're having a bridge, you know, if we're going to have a bridge in that area, there's going to be increased traffic, and I just feel like it would be, the need would be to have a station there, but.
Well, there, there are a significant number on the Jefferson Corridor, on the West Capital Avenue Corridor, and so we feel there are enough in the immediate vicinity that they will be able to serve the need.
Sure.
And even though this recommendation, you know, emerged out of the Pioneer Bluff transition plan, this is, you know, bigger than Pioneer Bluff, and this does include, you know, the Bridge District and parts of Washington as well, and so we want to, you know, we're looking at, we want to make sure we're looking at it in that broader context, it's not just purely Pioneer Bluff.
Okay. With that, I'm going to go ahead and open up the public hearing. However, at this time, I have no request to speak. Seems to be confirmed. So I will go ahead and close the public hearing and bring you back to the Commission for deliberation. And any additional questions, comments?
I just want to thank staff for addressing some of the questions that I raised when I received the staff report. I appreciated the, the comment about legal non-conforming for the existing fueling station.
I just want to point out that the one existing station in this area is home to the world's first publicly available hydrogen fueling station, and so only in West SAC do you get the world's first.
As important as that is, I totally understand the purpose of this ordinance change, however, and our need to activate our waterfront areas. So with that, I will entertain a motion.
I move to approve staff recommendation for item two.
Moved by Ms. Austin, seconded by Ms. Guerrero. All in favor, please signify by saying aye. Opposed? Passes unanimously. Thank you. Next on the, the agenda is item number three, which is a public hearing regarding the smart growth, smart, pardon, I'm on allergy medicine this evening, pretty strong. Public hearing regarding the smart growth investors to tentative subdivision map number 5079 in the Bridge District. Mr. Hardy?
Tonight before you, tentative map showing up on the screen as well. For 22 lots, 21, which would be single family, parcel 22 would be on the north, adjacent to Bridge Street for a future development. The project's bordered on the east by Riverfront North and as Bridge Street, Central Street to the east, and the alley to the south. Part of the request in reviewing this project is there's two areas that the project requires zoning administrator approval, and we're bringing those forward with this tentative map, which along the street frontages requires zero, set, zero, no, excuse me, the setback to be zero along the public right of ways, and they're requesting to have that setback. And this provides, in the Bridge District specific plan, provides some ability to vary some of the standards, a maximum of 25 percent. While the main building is set back, the design review would, and the building footprint may be set back, but there are proposed to have a terrace and stairwells adjacent to the right of way. Additionally, it does provide some ability to have some articulation in the, in the roofline with the buildings. They're also requesting the planer bed out adjacent to the public right of way to be extended into the right of way and would require an encroachment permit. Again, this is, is something that is permissible with the ZA action in the Bridge District's specific plan that allows for some variations to occur. The reasoning they're requesting it is to allow for a larger area of planer bed to have a better chance of keeping the soil cool enough than the ability for the vegetation to not overheat and be able to sustain itself. Condition 29 has been added in the event that encroachment permit is pulled that the underlying drainage underneath is to the sufficient review of the engineering that, that drainage is not impacted negatively. Part of the review and the, in the staff report gave a brief discussion about the number of units that the applicant, in their total amount of acreage, are required to build, and to date, they have 128. This is, single family unit does drop them down below the threshold, they're 51, 68 dwelling units per acre as required, however, the additional acres that they have yet to develop can make up those units and keep the density overall what is, what is required. I've discussed it with them, they, they're well aware of this. Just want to, you know, point that out, that the 386 units that they're required, 128 are built, and the remaining amount of units that could be allocated to the remainder portions of the property could accommodate those additional units needed. Also, this project has a unique request, probably unlike any other we've reviewed here, is an easement for a walkway that would go between Central Street, Riverfront, and an easement, the full block, and then it would also extend south between the central units, Buildings 6 through 17, and this is where their addressing would take place, and they're requesting their addressing be taken off Ames Walk rather than traditional public street frontage. The other units would have Riverfront and Central Streets respectively, since they face that right of way, so it would just be those interior units would have that walkway address. So you'd have the walkway come down and the utilities would be in, in there as well, but it would also serve as the addressing mechanism. It has been reviewed by police, fire, engineering, and planning as well, and building, and everybody is in support of, from a staff perspective, that it, there isn't an issue with that. The applicant has stated that there are places, facility in Sacramento currently that uses this type of addressing, so it isn't unique, specifically just something different than we've traditionally done here in West Sacramento. The interior alleys would be, paved alleys would be unnamed, and those will remain private. Additionally, concurrently, the applicant has submitted for design review for the single family homes on this map. The staff is reviewing them, however, we've not approved them pending the hearing tonight, and any comments Commissioner may have, we can incorporate that into the design review as needed. Before you is a memo that has modified some conditions and eliminated some conditions based upon the request of the applicant and discussion with development engineering that would modify condition 11, as noted in your memo, and eliminated conditions 17 and 34, as the, 34 doesn't apply and 17 isn't really needed. So with the conditions of approval as modified and the zoning administrator approval of the varied setbacks, the project is in conformance with the general plan, zoning ordinance, and the Bridge District specific plan. Tonight, we have Mark Hoyer from Development Engineering, Katie Jacobson, so the City Manager's Office, and myself to assist in answering your questions. That concludes my presentation.
Thank you, Justin. Just for clarification, it was, it's condition 10 that is modified in our packet. Before I go ahead and open up the public hearing, are there questions of staff that can be addressed prior to that? Okay, I'm going to go, go ahead and open up the public hearing. At this point, I don't have any request to speak. Is there a planned presentation for this evening?
Yes, the applicant does have one.
Okay, thank you, thank you.
Good evening Commissioners. My name is Stephen Jay Cox. I am the Chief Marketing Officer and Director of Design at Fulcrum, and I thank Justin for presenting this before you. I thought it would make some sense to take a moment and provide some contents, context to, for the request, and perhaps the easiest way to do that is to take a quick look at what we have recently built out in the Bridge District to give you an idea of how we're looking at the puzzle of putting together for rent, for sale housing in the Bridge District at a city density. So if I could start, I suppose the only opportunity I have is to actually ask you to advance the slides, I'm sorry. Okay, so let's go to that slide, it's good. Okay, so here we are in the Bridge District. What you'll notice is that this photograph is taken from the apartment building Habitat, which we had recently completed, looking back toward Tower Bridge along the waterfront there. The parcel that's in, that's the subject of this tentative subdivision map is the one that you see immediately to the left, just on the other side of the alley there. So that's the relationship it has to the overall neighborhood, what's built. You see that looking forward from this corner to the north and to the east, that will be the new frontier of building from, from Garden Park as being the center of our area of development. On to the next slide. And I would be remiss if I didn't take just a brief moment to update you on the progress of a project which was presented to you last by me when we were together, the barn project. The next slide, please. You remember that we talked about the idea of the barn as being something that would activate the investment of the Riverwalk, and that is now underway, you'll be pleased to know. And if you happen to go out there, you'll see something quite a lot like this, which is fantastic for us to see a project that's been contemplated on paper for such a long time, to actually see it spatialized, scale-wise, and also the relationship to the river, to Riverwalk, to the city grid. It's, it's meeting all the objectives that we had hoped for, so we're excited to see it completed. So let's now move on to the for sale, for rent housing. We've completed two types of projects so far in the Bridge District. The first one are 32 homes that surround Garden Park. If you recall, the, the objective of these, the way that they were sited around Garden Park was to create essentially an outdoor room. It was our ambition as a developer to create an environment that was a complete idea. Since we were building in the context where there was no development around us, we needed to create a space where sightlines would cross over a shared public amenity. That was really important to us, and it was really important to the buyers who approached us. The sales of the park bottoms have gone very robustly. We are now down to the final four homes that are being released presently. They are the larger homes, in case any of you are interested. They're the larger homes that are actually on the corners and at the ends of the development. If you could, one of the things, and I'd like to stop here on this slide, is one of the things that we found to be a narrative that emerged for us in the design process, and we were curious to know how it would resonate with the public, was an interest in trying to build as many cues into the built product that would make some productive use of a relationship between inside and outside, so much so that it's actually become one of the larger editing ideas of the work that we're doing. And whereas it was something that we discovered when we were, when we were in the design process for these two phases, it now ranks prominently at the very top of everything that we do in terms of how we edit and think about our projects. And that idea is really simply expressed. We're seeking to build out a city density without sacrificing a meaningful relationship to outside. What that has done for us is it's caused us to look at the development patterns that were, that were, and would normally be the first reaction to a development site, and edit them against that criteria. In some cases, it's resulting a different formulation of how units are packed together on the site. The project that this tentative map contemplates is exactly one of those conditions, which I'd love to share with you in a moment. So if we continue looking at the park moderns, we can move through these rather quickly. These are, this is the overall photograph of the, of the homes as they surround the park, and what you'll notice at the far end is two apartment buildings that are mirrored on the side where I'm taking a photograph from in this case, four apartment buildings that have a total of 96 apartments. And if we move to the next slide, and these buildings are collectively known as Habitat, and we've simply distinguished them as northeast, southeast, northwest, southwest, et cetera. And here's what they look like. There are three stories of residential apartment homes over a level of parking, and each of them is a unique design. What's interesting about all of these, as we look through them, is with the apartments, arguably building at a higher density, we, we had to make some moves in order to maximize this relationship to outside. So you notice the façades have a lot of windows, the units themselves organized in a way that really privileges an idea of light and air. And here's a sight sign that looks at the whole configuration. Now what's interesting about this is if you were to take, you know, just the homes alone, or just the apartments alone, you get two different pictures of what blended density is. And if we go to the next slide, what we see here is the houses are built over 1.37 acres and the apartments are built over 0.8 acres, so, whereas we get a different density calculation for each of them when we blend them, and we truly do think of them as, you know, one, one phase of development for us, is 56.4 dwellings an acre, which is in excess of the minimum requirement of building density. This is a strategy that we're going to continue to employ as we, as we build in the next phase. And the next phase of work, I'll get this out of the way first, is what we have is we have, the first one, the second one is grayed out although it's difficult to read on the projection. The first one that's before us today, which is the subject of the tentative map where the parcels have been divided into lots for homes, 0.86 acres, 21 homes. Now, we're also considering part of this phase, an apartment project, and it's something that is, we're just now in schematic design. So I didn't want to leave this off the table and have you think that we are only proposing to do houses and then more houses to yield density that's lower than what's expected of us. It is also a blended density approach, if we move to the next slide. What's interesting about this is if you look through the prism of wanting to maximize the relationship to outside and how to bring a good mix of rental, rental residents and property owners into the mix, the question is on a lot like this, how do you do it? And how do you do it in a way that makes the relationship between the rental property and the for, for sale property rational and palatable to everyone involved? One of the things that we thought would be a very strong move is we started to look at what our options at what our options were to lay out single-family home lots relative to all of the other things that go along with the trash pickup and the sheer linear footage that's necessary to park bins outside with, you know, two feet in between each. How do you do that in a way that creates an urban environment? And so we were then forced to look at putting the, the for sale product along the alley so that we could handle the trash pickup needs for that type of use. And then come in behind, from the alley with two subordinate alleys that serve garages and such. And what you see as a result, and this gets to the point that Justin introduced earlier with Eames Walk, there is a, in order to get the density that we want out of this site, we have to have homes that face each other around a shared courtyard. And that shared courtyard does not have a street address. And so one of the things that we thought was the overall network of the neighborhood would benefit from more porous connections to the waterfront. And so we introduced this idea of separating the for sale product from the for rent product by having a pedestrian throughway. The benefit of the pedestrian throughway for us was that it was an opportunity because it was not overstructure, that we could actually put trees in the ground and they can grow to be full mature trees, you know, a different condition than putting trees over structure. This could be a really lovely space. It could create an adequate buffer between the for rent product and the for sale product and be overall and, and a very nice neighborhood amenity. And so since we're focusing, so I wanted to set that up to give you an idea of like the larger context we're working in enough, I can zoom in and look specifically at the houses because there are a few things here that deserve attention. Because I imagine that when you hear things like we're, we're changing the idea of what the setback is, or wanting to encroach a little bit, you're, you're probably wondering what that means. And so we'll share with you some of the renderings that, that we're working with now as we study the options for the architectural design to explain why we're asking for these things. The first view I'd like to show you is one that is as though you were standing right next to Habitat Building northeast, looking north. So remember the photograph I showed you before that was sort of the establishing shot looking back at the river frontage from inside the apartment buildings? If, that same view but on the ground level. And it covers this, this area of Riverfront Street where, you know, we have these requests to do something different with setbacks and encroachments than what we contemplated before. So next slide, please. What we're interested in doing is, of course, we love the idea of, you know, minimal setbacks off of the property line. However, it's been our experience when we worked, built the building that is drawn and outlined there, once we sort of like dug right next to the sidewalk and went down, we kind of found ourselves meeting an infiltration bed, the burrito wrap, which is a hallmark of the, you know, stormwater infiltration system that is implemented here in the bridge district. And so, you know, when we put up a building, we have, it's good for us if we're able to get into, to the dirt and not hit anything else, is one thing. And, and secondly, you know, the buildings, the face of the wall does not exactly end up, you know, right where you think it does because there's a footing that has a larger footprint under that wall. So because of a couple, because of those types of reasons, you were asking simply to move the buildings back a bit so that we wouldn't encounter those things which can have an impact on costs and have an impact on a schedule of executing a project. We also thought that if we took correspondence, since we're taking a slight step back, taking a slight step forward through raised planters, as a way to kind of rationalize something that we inherited from the specific plan, where in this particular case, we have 19 feet of sidewalk, you know, from riverfront all the way to the property line. Some would call it generous, some, some would, would say that it's more appropriate for a retail street in so many ways. But what we thought we could do is so that it wasn't necessarily a situation where you were right, right next to a wall, that we could create a planter area that reached into that space a little bit more and created a bit more of a transition. Not a transition, in my opinion, that lends this suburban quality, one that yields a very urban quality, but as I said before, privileges this relationship to outside by providing opportunities for planting and such. So the next slide, please. The next view gives you an idea of what we're imagining as one is standing at Riverfront Street looking west down Eames Walk. And what's, what's important about this view is that, you can go ahead, it's fine. Eames Walk in total is not designed yet. Eames Walk in total is something that will be designed and associated with a multifamily apartment building that will be at the north end of that site. And so what we're, what we're working to do now is we're working to sort of provide, you know, the minimum amount of access that's necessary to get to the houses and the courtyard without blocking any moves to do something great in Eames Walk when the apartment building's under construction. Why? Because we're going to, if we're building a multifamily building on a block that now has basically three sides of street frontage, we're going to need staging area. And the staging area is going to be Eames Walk and, as the first move. So this gives you an idea of what that transition is like in the mix of housing that would be along, along Eames Walk. Next illustration. The final illustration I'd like to show you is to give you an idea of what it might be like inside this interior courtyard. And notice that when, the way that we've set this up is similar in strategy to the way that we executed the park moderns. The, the riverfront facing homes are a complete idea. In other words, from the sidewalk, from, from parking to front door, it's an idea, you have a relationship to the river. On the central side, central street side, you have, you know, Central Street, that context, the, the homes, et cetera. And then the homes in the center along the court, these also represent a complete idea. So it's not of great consequence that to the north of the property is going to be under construction after these are complete. Let's go ahead into the next view. Now, this courtyard is going to be, in some ways, a miniaturized version of what the idea of Garden Park was, creating an outdoor room. However, just like the park moderns have outdoor porches with fireplaces, these will have patios that belong to each of, each of the homes, spaces that belong to each of the homes. So whereas, you know, we see this as being a place that everyone, you know, feels welcome to move into, of course, because of the intimacy created by the proximity of the buildings, it will feel a bit more private. And you will go there if you belong there, we believe. Next view, please. So again, here's, here's the overall look at the configuration of the 21 homes. And then I have, if we have questions, I have elevations that, you know, produced by our architects that give you an idea of the overall massing and such, which we might find useful as we talk through questions you might have. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Jaycocks.
Yes.
Are there any questions of the applicant? And before we get into this, I just, we'll bring up that we are discussing a tentative map, not the design of the buildings this evening. But thank you so much for your presentation. I did, I did appreciate it, and I also appreciated the update of the barn project.
Very well.
It's great to see it moving. Comments, questions?
I actually have a question. I can't turn on my mic, but I think I got it now. I guess my question is, we spent years and many months and many years putting together our plan for the whole area, and the first project we have, we already are making exceptions to what we did. And I guess my question is, because, you know, like Stephen said, we need to have something on a corner post and we need to set back, does that mean everything that's going to be developed there, then we're going to have to make exceptions to all these things that we established over all the years? I mean, they, and you guys were part of the group that said, here's what we want to do and this is how it works. And I guess my question is, why are we making changes?
Well, you know, what we're, what we're looking at here is something that the plan definitely anticipated, that once we got to the real world implementation, you know, some minor, you know, minor deviations, you know, may be necessary to help implement, you know, the plan's overall objectives. And so here's, here we are now, you know, six years after we did that plan, and now we know what the market is like and what the, you know, developers believe the market can bear. And the implementation of that is looking for some relatively minor exceptions to the plan, ones that, you know, may not even really be visible, you know, sort of if you're walking down the street.
Well, I, I don't know that I care that we have to make the adjustment to the plan to make the building work. My question is, what does this do to our overall plan that we have? And, you know, did we make some mistakes on trying to put everything right on the sidewalk?
Well, you know, if we, if we were redoing that plan today, we probably would make some adjustments and provide maybe a bit more flexibility, you know, in the plan than the literal zero setbacks. I mean, that's just sort of how the real, what the real world, you know, has told us, you know, since the plan, you know, has been done. But there, it still remains, you know, fulfilling that urban edge, you know, along the sidewalk, you know, in this area. You know, this is, you know, hardly a, you know, a large, big, you know, big, a building setback, you know, way off the street and big lawn.
Right. I mean, we're still relatively close. I guess my concern was just the fact, what's it do? Not for just your project, but for the whole area down there. And then my next question, this one will be easier for you to answer probably than poor David over there. But when we, when you have the area where they drive in, because there's garages in there where they park, right?
Yes.
Do they go all the way through?
Do they go, does that alley continue, do you mean?
Yeah, will it go all the way through? Or it doesn't dead end, does it?
It does dead end, yes.
How do you get a garbage truck in there, then?
Well, the garbage, the homeowners will need to wheel their, their trash receptacles out to the alley. Currently, the agreement that the city has with the trash service is they don't, they won't back up alleys, things like that. Something that we as private developers would urge the city to re-look at because to a certain extent, that kind of contract is an obstacle to, you know, densification.
But that's, that's pretty common, you know? I mean, even the fire department doesn't like to back up. They'll do it to save you, but they're not, they don't like it. I mean, you know, they want to be able to drive through also. And I was just, I was curious why you didn't put it all the way through, because it looks like you could do that fairly easily.
We could, but that would make Eames Walk a street. And if it's a street, it's, it's a different, it's a different kind of public space.
Because the area between what you've already built and that is going to be just a walkway?
Perhaps we could go back to the illustration a couple of slides back.
I'm glad we're doing this, because I, I got a little lost. I'm trying to visualize. There's one more back, I think.
Yeah, a few more, a few more. There you go, right there.
That one.
Uh huh. Okay.
That's what we already have?
No, this is not built. Nothing, nothing here is built. What you're being asked to look at tonight is the tentative map for the area of detail where the houses are.
Right, down, down little vacant lot that's left.
Right.
But there's a street that goes through there.
There is an alley.
Central Street.
Central Street is the north-south street that flanks the left margin of the, of the page or your screen.
What's the one that goes across, then?
The one that goes across.
Because you have a vacant lot, and then there's a street.
Do you see the same image that I see on your screen?
I don't know, I was out there driving around.
No, no, no.
I don't know what you have seen.
Is there an image on your screen?
Yeah, I see.
Okay, great. Okay, so what we have, what we have on the bottom, east to west, or left to right, is the alley. And the alley is, is the street that you enter the existing apartment building from and also the garages for the homes that were built around Garden Park. That street exists, that's where the trash pickup will be for both, both the new homes and the existing homes.
Okay.
Central Street is the, the north-south street that flanks the left's margin of your screen, and Riverfront is the right margin. It's difficult to read because the words are so small. The street at the very top is Riverfront, is Bridge Street. So that's the street that you land on if you're coming down the off-ramp of the 80 into the bridge district.
How long's the alleyway, then?
The alleyway? It's a good 300 and some feet, I believe.
I mean, I think your concept is great, because I, I think everything you've done so far looks pretty darn good out there and people seem very happy. It's just I, I'm not a big fan of changing something unless you can figure out why I'm doing it. And I haven't figured out, you haven't told me why I'm doing any of this. You told me the one that's facing out to the barn, because you need a little more area to set your foundation.
Right. That's the only exception that the setback addresses.
Yeah, so that makes sense. But why are we doing the other, then?
Which other, sir?
What other exception are you asking for? The walkway?
The other exception we're asking for is we're asking to encroach into the 19 feet of sidewalk, which would otherwise be 19 feet of concrete to create a planting area in front of the home.
Can we do that with the water shortage and everything?
Yes, we're going to be installing drought tolerant plants, but the idea is to create a planter that's sufficient in width or depth, depending upon how you look at it, that it doesn't overheat the roots of the plants and they fail to survive. And so that's the idea is to create that. It's a way to, you know, to make that a more pleasant, walkable space rather than being 19 feet of concrete.
Remember, I think the concept is great. I like what you're thinking. I'm just not sure that I like the fact that we have to change our plan quickly that you helped design.
Well, I think, you know, just.
Not maybe you personally, but your group did.
Right. No, I understand. And I know that when we participated in putting together the criteria that went into the standards for the district, we all understood them, understood that we are creating guidelines. And in our experience, very seldom do guidelines, you know, 100% of the time survive the real world. So that's why we're here, you know, talking about exceptions, and that's why I imagine that almost every project that's built in a bridge district, you'll have someone like me talking to you about how the rules don't quite fit and that in some cases, you know, you'll say, well, that, you know, results in a detriment. It doesn't really get us closer. But in some cases, they'll say, it does get us closer to an idea that we'd like to share with the city.
Thank you.
I'm gonna go with Alex first.
My question has to do with verticality. Are all of these homes intended to be two and three story?
Yes, the, actually, though, they are three and four stories.
Three and four, okay.
Three and four stories.
Better yet.
Mm-hmm.
And I understand, Mr. Chairman, what you said about considering the land use map and not necessarily the home design, but I think this really affects both. I don't, I don't see a lot of plan for single level for sale residences in the district. And I raise that because we've had a couple of falls on stairs in our development. I live in Ironworks. And it calls into question whether people who have a difficult time navigating stairs could age in place and not have to move. I know across the river, it's, the pattern is much the same, although there are a few single level for purchase, 500 N Street, for example. But it seems to me, and not necessarily for this project, but at some point, I think it would behoove us to create a single level for sale options for people that really can't or don't want to handle stairs. And I understand that that changes the footprint and it changes the opportunity perhaps for density, but sooner or later, I think that's going to become important.
Alex, can I ask for clarification? Just because it's a part, interest to me, too. Are you talking about single level, such as a multi-story condo building with an elevator? Or are you simply limiting your, your comment to a single story building?
Well, no, multi-story would be fine. But it's stairs that I'm really thinking about. But it's stairs that I'm really thinking about.
If I may, really quickly, from a developer point of view, that product is a condominium product. And our office most certainly has been thinking about that kind of product and we have, and I have notions about where that kind of product will exist. It's just that, you know, presently, what we're seeing in the marketplace, given, you know, that not only is demanding up, but supply is very quickly going to increase as well, is in order to breed price competitive, we're encouraged with for sale housing to create them in a way that have the minimum in HOA dues. Condominium projects are a different category altogether. You have your mortgage payment and you have HOA dues. And so, we certainly see that as part of the Bridge District. We see it at a different point in the timeline, though, of the Bridge District development.
Thank you.
Amber De.
Yeah, I'll, I'll actually start off with a couple of comments, but eventually I'm gonna ask a couple of questions. So, just to respond to Commissioner Moore, my, I'm fortunate to work for someone who's considered by many to be one of the statewide experts on infill development, and one of her favorite sayings is, "I never met a plan I didn't change." The reason I bring up that point is that when you're doing development that is really groundbreaking, you often, as soon as we form a plan, it's already stale. So, I think that it's really the, the purpose of the Planning Commission to make sure that the, the, you know, Bible, so to speak, of planning for a given area or even a jurisdiction can remain fresh and responsive to demographic changes and planning and, and development as it, as it changes. And I just think that's something for us to, to bear in mind. I also think that's really important to talk about. The Bridge District has been, you know, really hailed nationally, not, nationally, but regionally and statewide as a really great model. You know, we've had, you know, the Secretary of Business Transportation, I don't know, her title is like seventeen words long, but she and several others have been out here to celebrate what, the public-private partnership that has happened between the applicant and the city, and I think that's something that we really need to bear in mind. And then to Commissioner Keltzer's point about housing for many different types, I think what's more important to me than having a house that could serve many different types of people, I think our goal is to have many different types of housing throughout our city that can address the needs of different types of folks. Then the city, I believe, has really taken that to heart, the planning that we have and Southport, Washington, Bridge District, I think really reflects that, that we're really looking at serving many different types of households. And also to, to a related point, West Sacramento was chosen as one of three cities in California, there's many cities selected statewide, to look at livability issues by AARP, right? And it's, it's interesting to me because West Sacramento was one of three cities, the other two, I think were like San Diego and LA. It's very significant. So, we are actively looking at that issue and I, I actually share your concern. I think that not only do we need to look at many different housing types, I think that we need to be incredibly cognizant of aging in place, particularly of, you know, this kind of Silver tsunami that people are talking about. I don't think that this particular density and housing type is meant for that population, but I think we have a really great opportunity right across the street and throughout our community. So, as we continue to do planning and development in our city, we should continue to look at. So, I, I support your comments, but just wanted to throw that out there. So, to my question, I was wondering if you could talk a little bit, and anecdotally is fine, about what type of interest you have received on your multifamily and your single family products, whether, you know, one seems to be going more than the other, whether, you know, people are more interested in a larger household. I'm just curious how, what you've done so far is informing what you're planning and developing currently.
Well, part of the reason that we've, you know, come to you with this tentative map request and then are following through almost immediately afterwards with for sale product is that, the Park Moderns, we had thirty-two homes, and it depends on how you frame it, but we, when we opened pre-sales in January of two thousand and fourteen, when, you know, there was nothing but moved dirt out in, in the area, almost half of them went immediately, you know, without any tangible evidence of what was going to be the outcome. And then we had two other sales weekends, one in September, one in, one in November of two thousand and fourteen. We, internally, you know, we, we like to think that, you know, it's been about a week of active selling and, you know, twenty-seven homes sold. Compare that to the apartment buildings where we have ninety-six apartments and, you know, the, the range and mix of the apartments is to some measure in the spirit of what the unit mix requests were from the city and the specific plan. What we're seeing is that the smallest and most affordable, therefore, units are going fastest. No two bedrooms have been rented. Not even any of the larger one bedrooms have been rented, it's a concentration on the smaller units. So, we've been on the market for about three months and in terms of absorption, we expect it to be at about thirty percent and we're at about thirty percent. So, to circle back to the beginning of my answer, part of the reason that we are starting with for sale product is that there's demonstrated demand and that with, since it's going to take probably another six to nine months to fully lease Habitat, we're also aware of Capital Yards, you know, north of Rayleigh Field. And so, there is a sense of supply and it doesn't make a lot of sense for us to come to the market with more apartment supply at this very moment because of that.
Thank you.
Thank you for the presentation. My question is specific to the map and Ames Walk, and I, I'm just wondering if you could speak to the walkway that will be between the interfacing units and your, your feeling as to whether or not that's actually enough space to be a public place that could be, I mean, I know it's not gonna be comparable to Garden Park, but to the extent that it can actually be a public convening place for those residents, will there be enough room there and what is your thoughts initially on that space being large enough?
The size of it right now is preliminary, right? Because the footprint of the building that you see above is, you know, basically the width of parking two cars and having a drive out down the center and then the outlying sort of business of stoops and all that on, on the buildings. And it gets you, you know, between thirty-five and sixty feet, you know, between the buildings. Part of the reason that we really wanted to go this way was because we understood that, you know, from an urbanism point of view, you know, we really wanted to have fronts of buildings to fronts of buildings, sides of buildings to sides and backs to backs, you know, so that you didn't have, you know, one product type looking at the back of another. Ames Walk allowed us to accomplish that and to create the space in between. We don't see it as a park. We see it as a pedestrian thoroughfare. There, there will obviously be some park-like amenities sprinkled throughout, there'll be places to sit. I'm sure, you know, that people will walk dogs through there, whether, you know, we provide prompts for that or not, so we'll provide for it. But, but yes, I mean, we think it's gonna be a pleasant space and it also creates enough room between what would be from the ground on the housing side, from the for sale housing, two and a half stories above grade, and then an apartment building that could be four or five stories. We've looked at it sectionally, we're comfortable with the space that's created in between, so it doesn't feel like the height of the building is oppressive to the homes, but the height of the building can be achieved, such as to meet the spirit of what the city would like to see on Riverfront, on Bridge Street.
Okay, thank you.
Martha, any questions?
No, just a few, just a few comments. Thank you very much for the presentation and, and for the photographs on the designs or the, you know, the design and how it looked like, so that I can get a good idea, more or less, of, of what you were thinking. I did have a chance to speak with staff prior to the meeting, just to get some clarification on the walkways and how that would fit into, you know, overall, how it's gonna fit into the use of the housing and then also the apartments that are gonna be built. And, and I appreciate that you're taking a look at some housing that is going to be attractive for our future homeowners there and the blend of that with the apartments. I also am intrigued with your, your innovative design here and that it, it's new to West Sacramento and, you know, it's, it's also an experiment to see, you know, how it's gonna work and so far, you know, what we've been trying is working out pretty well. And my understanding is it's been applied in other cities, so it's something that, you know, we should take a look at designing as well, because looking in the future, being that this is gonna be in the proximity of a very, you know, working, you know, environment and also reducing the use of cars, vehicles and increasing, you know, walkways and things like that, getting people to get out of their car and to, or, and use their bicycles, I think that's really important and, and I think that your design really lends to that. So, and, you know, a family-friendly environment too. So, I, I think, looking at it from that perspective and appreciate, you know, the feedback also from looking in the future where we're gonna include designs that, you know, are gonna be sensitive to folks that are gonna be aging as they move forward. And looking at the setback, I can, I can understand, you know, that the, that we do need to make the exceptions and I, and I understand that very well and the planter, you know, and so I think that all that was something that I, you know, speaking with staff, got a very good understanding why it's important to have. Thank you.
Thank you. With that, I'm going to close the public hearing. Thank you very much for your presentation.
Thank you.
Okay, we're just getting started on the Bridge District and I appreciate the flexibility to allow for unique and attractive designs and regarding Mr. Keltzer, Doctor Keltzer's comments, trip up over that all the time. I look forward to actually seeing a diversity of product in the future as well, so. With that, a reminder that there are some amended conditions, specifically numbers ten, eleven, and thirteen. Ten was amended, eleven was stricken and thirty-four, sorry, thirty-four was stricken.
So, Charlie Big, it's on the memo, it's listed as condition eleven, but that is actually condition ten. We're recommending some additional clarifying language and then conditions seventeen and thirty-four, we recommend that you strike tonight.
Correct.
Eleven, as in your staff report, remains as it was written.
Correct. Did I say eleven? I'm sorry. Okay, if there's no other comments, I'll entertain a motion. I know it's a complicated one.
I'll make the motion to approve the amended version, including the changes to item number ten and the deletion of items number seventeen, thirteen from the, or seventeen and thirty-four of the conditions.
Moved by Commissioner Sternfeld, seconded by Vice Chair Groh. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed?
None.
Passes unanimously. Thank you. Final item on the agenda this evening is number four. It is a public hearing regarding the proposed conditional use permit number fifteen dash fourteen for a four-story, one, I don't think this is correct, one hundred and ten room.
Yes, so before we begin this item, I would just like to read the tentative map appeal into the record for the prior item, please. Any interested party may appeal the decision of the Planning Commission and the this matter to City Council by filing a written appeal with the city clerk within ten days of tonight's action, and that appeal must be accompanied by the appropriate filing fee.
Thank you. And looking at the actual packet, yes. This is the public hearing regarding the proposed conditional use permit for a four-story one hundred and ten-room hotel, four-story eighty-two, oh, conditional use permit number fifteen dash fifteen for a four-story eighty-two-room hotel and tentative parcel map number fifty-eight-five at thirty-two forty-five Reed Avenue. And, Seamus? Thank you.
Good evening, members of the commission and Charlie Big. For item number four, staff is seeking approval of three separate entitlements. The first is a tentative map to divide the property into four. The other one is for a hundred and ten-room hotel and the other one is for the eighty-two-room The one hundred and ten-room hotel on the southwest corner is proposed to be at Spring Hill Suites. It, and then the other one is a courtyard hotel, or proposed to be a courtyard hotel with eighty-two rooms. The courtyard hotel, we're also seeking, the staff is seeking, the applicant is seeking a FAR, or height exception, and for the Spring Hill, the applicant is seeking a FAR Staff is recommending approval of the FAR exception for the Spring Hill, the southwest corner. And the FAR was put into the zoning ordinance for hotels to allow more amenities in the hotel. Hotels have lower peak hour trips, they're, the trips are spread out through, throughout the day. And really, a higher FAR hotel really is a higher quality hotel, it has more amenities like the pool, meeting room, and it allows for that. So, that's why staff is recommending approval of FAR. And the height exception for the eighty-two-room hotel is to allow the hotel to be at seventy-five feet. Majority of the hotel is at sixty-five feet, which is the height limit. The applicant is proposing to have a small section to go up to seventy-five feet for their signage and in their justification statement, they are seeking that height to be visible from the freeway, which is a couple blocks over. Also, there will be a bus turnout on the northwest side. You can kind of see it there. It's to the left of the proposed eighty-two-room hotel. So, the history of this site is, the previous owner illegally removed some heritage oak trees and they went to a code enforcement hearing in two thousand and seven and the mitigation requirements for the site is a hundred and eighty-two thousand dollars to pay for the tree mitigation or replanting trees, which is five hundred and sixty-six fifteen-gallon trees or a hundred and eighty-nine twenty-four-inch boxes. Or the applicant can do combination of the two, and this is to cover what the previous owner did. So, the applicant has been in talks with Dina, the Urban Forest Manager, about paying the mitigation. No plan has yet been submitted for mitigation, which is why staff is recommending condition of approval number three and four, that the mitigation either be paid or a replanting plan provided prior to December thirty-first of this year, if this is approved tonight. And this would give the applicant some time to get a replanting plan or to, to pay it, because they were not the one that illegally removed the trees, it was the previous owner. Staff is trying to work with them to get this rectified and the applicant has been very receptive of this mitigation and they bought the property knowing of the tree removal and mitigation requirements. So, a mitigated, mitigated deck was prepared for this project. Mitigation was for biological resources, air quality and cultural resources are mitigation requirements for those three. The biological was for the trees and the mitigation is the replanting plan or paying the mitigation fee. The air quality, there were impacts, construction impacts, so there's mitigation for that. And then the cultural, potentially, if you find human remains, they would need to stop, so there was mitigation measure for that. So, tonight, staff is seeking approval from the Planning Commission on these three entitlements. They are separate entitlements. There's the one hotel, the other hotel and the map. So, I'm here to answer questions and Mark in Engineering is here as well. This concludes staff's present- This concludes staff's presentation.
Thank you, Seamus. Are there any, are there any questions of staff prior to opening the public hearing?
So just a little clarification on the tree mitigation. These are conditions of approval on the development of the site, but the site has not yet been, I mean, are you, and the question is, is a property in contract? The reason I'm asking is if this development does not move forward, this is a condition of approval, that does, that would mean that the mitigation would not be completed or paid before December or when grading permits were pulled. Do you see, does that question make sense?
I can, I can respond to that. Section 19.05.013B of the city's municipal code places the burden of any abatement orders on successors and interests on real property, which is why the current property owner is still obligated to comply with the previous mitigation measures. So even if they're not complied with as a condition of approval for this particular project, the city does have alternative recourses to making sure that that is complied with, including, for example, a court order.
That's very helpful. Thank you.
Is there a formal presentation this evening by the applicant? Okay, at this time, I'll open the public hearing. And just please state your name.
My name is Gerald Jenkins, and I'm a consultant for Ney Hill Development. Amric Singh is the developer of the property. Let me get a couple more notes. In light of our discussion just now with the mitigation of the trees, I'd like to bring to light some of the history of how this occurred. The mitigation is, as it stands right now, is $189,000. August 9th of 2007, Ms. Kurtley contacted the previous owner, Schrader, and spoke to him about the trees that he illegally, illegally had removed. At that time, at $325 per inch, the penalty was $337,350. They negotiated that down to $183,950 on December 14th. I wanted to correct the statement that was made that there were heritage oaks. They were not heritage oaks. They were pine trees. There was actually 16 pine, 16 pine trees that were removed illegally by Mr. Schrader. Now, according to the tree ordinance of West Sacramento, it says that the penalty for that should be, it should be classified as a misdemeanor and that it would be a $1,000 fine. And also that the violation of, this is chapter 8.24.140, violation and penalty, any person, corporation, or legal entity, on and on and on. It says that the chapter is committed, continues permitted by any such person, corporation, or legal entity, that the penalty shall be, is punishable by a fine of not more than $1,000 or imprisonment not to exceed six months. Mr. Schrader, that was not given to him. And that's what the penalty states in here. Now, I'm familiar with the mitigation of removing heritage oaks in the region. And it's about $325 per inch to mitigate the removal of a heritage oak. These are pine trees. These weren't even, they fell into the category of heritage trees by their size. The ordinance goes back to say that a heritage tree can be classified as a, as a heritage tree by its size. And that was 23 point, if it exceeds 23.8 inches in diameter. And the trees that they identified that were removed illegally were 24 to 36 inches in diameter. We hired an arborist to go out and take a look at the site. And the arborists concluded that to date, right now, there are no heritage trees, according to the, to your ordinance, on the property. So those trees that exceeded the 23.8 inches were removed by Mr. Schrader. We did buy the property knowing that this was going to be a liability. But we didn't anticipate, we had multiple discussions with Mr. Tilly and Ms. Kurtley about this issue. And she had mentioned that we would be able to work out a mitigation plan that would include the replanting of trees on the property. In our report, in, well, in the staff report, it shows that the mitigation should be paid prior to issuance of a building permit. In light of the fact that we're dividing the lots into two, into four different parcels, we would like to have this lien placed against the four individual parcels and mitigate by planning on the site at four different times when we developed, prior to be issued a building permit on those parcels, is what we're requesting. It isn't, it's very, very prohibitive to the construction, to process with what our finances are, to put up $189,000 at this point. And, you know, we did inherit something knowingly, but it really puts us in a very tough position to be able to proceed with the project. It's a very good project. So we're requesting that that condition of approval number 13 be moved to, be changed to reflect that the $189,000 either be mitigated by planning on each of the four parcels prior to issuance of a building permit for each parcel. We feel that the trees that were illegally taken down came off of the parcel. And we can do those, that planning in addition to any required planning by the Planning Department. Ms. Kurtley and I, we had discussed that we would be able to integrate some of the planning in with satisfying this mitigation. So we asked the, the commission to please consider that. I took the opportunity today to go to a professional landscaper, and I got his cost on planting the trees and setting up the irrigation. And it came to, for box trees, it was 79, 20 gallons, no, 15 gallons were, I think it was 91, how much, it was 47,000 times two. That was for the 20s. And for the 15s, it was maybe 10 or 15% less. But we would like to mitigate this problem ourselves, although we didn't create it. But we don't want to put dollars out as this progresses until we are issued, prior to issuance of the building permit, we will have a landscape plan. You know, there's a lot of improvements that have to be made to the project. And to have that landscape plan in place prior to December of this year is, would be a real tough climb, a very, very tough climb for us. So are there any questions concerning the mitigation of the trees?
I realize this is a touchy point. I'm going to take notes. And I think if we can get through your full presentation, I'll, I'll actually then take comments from the community. And then I will keep the public hearing open so we can then call you back up for questions.
Okay, great. This is Mr. Amric Singh. He's going to tell you about the Spring Hill Suites. No, you can talk to him now about your project.
And for the record, could you please state your name?
Good evening. My name is Amric Singh. And I want to say thank you to give me time to speak in front of you all panel. This project is, both hotels are going to be by Marriott. Marriott is number one franchise in the hotel industry. And they dominate the whole entire world. I'm lucky that I was approved by Marriott. They took personal my interview in Washington, DC. They checked my prior existing hotel business, how I'm running, how's my guest salt score, how's my inspection was conducted by all three different franchise. So they finally approved. I think this project is an asset to the city of West Sacramento. We do not have any Marriott hotels in our West Sacramento city. And as well as proud myself that I was approved by Marriott. So just both hotels will create at least 110 jobs, as well as it bring 1.3 million in revenue every year to the city of West Sacramento. With tax and unemployment, if, I believe, we will have at least less than, more than 40% low wages, low-income families, jobs creations here, too. And I also have a concern about the 189,000 for the tree mitigation. I will work with the city or with the planning to put new trees there and ask, you know, not to hold my building permit till December 2015. I want to say thank you, then we will discuss other issues, I mean, questions you guys have.
Thank you, Mr. Singh.
Thank you.
Good evening, good evening, Mr. Chairman and members of Planning Commission. My name is Ken Fong. I'm the architect on the project. I think we, we got a tremendous project that we're submitted to the city here for their approval. I'm here to answer any questions regarding our project. Or if you have any, any questions you, you want to ask, I'm here to, to answer any of the questions, so during your deliberation, if you have any questions you're going to ask from me, I'll try to answer it for you. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Fong. At this time, I do have one request to speak. Mr. Vinod Paul.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the commission. My name is Javais Siddiqui. I'm with JTS Engineering. And I'm the civil engineer working on the project. I'd be happy to answer any questions that come up.
Okay, so you are not Mr. Vinod Paul?
Beg your pardon?
You are not Vinod Paul. Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Paul?
Hi, good evening. Yeah, my name is Vinod Paul.
That's another reason we ask that people state their names. Thank you.
Yeah, hi, my name is Vinod Paul. I'm very glad when I found out this hotel project is coming. My, my business is across from there. I own the Chevron gas station, plus the Subway and the Indian restaurant. So this is a good thing for us, too, you know. And plus, that's, that side of the, where is my gas station is totally dead end. In the evening is no activity and is, I thought with the hotel is coming, it's going to be more safety for us also, and it's going to be more business for us, too, you know. So I'd love to see them as soon as you guys approve them.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Paul. As I mentioned before, I'm going to keep the public hearing open, just in case we have questions, because I have a feeling that we're going to have some questions. I would also like to state that although I do appreciate all of the discussion about the trees, there are some points of that discussion that are outside of the purview of this commission. However, on those matters, I'm sure the city will, will take those up. Regarding the specific details to the mitigation, the timing of that and specific conditions, those are within the purview of this commission. Mona, did you have any clarification that you would like to add on that? I heard you whispering over there quite a bit.
Yes, I do, Chair Leibig. You are correct in stating that the Planning Commission cannot now amend the order of the administrative hearing officer for the code enforcement case, which started this tree mitigation requirement. Also, I'd like to point out that condition, I believe it's condition number three and not condition number 13, which the applicant's representative stated on the record, which is the subject of their concern. Staff has no objections, and the tree ordinance does not require that the only avenue for complying with mitigation is through the payment of in-lufies. In fact, if it's possible for the applicant to replant all of the required trees, that's certainly a possibility under the tree ordinance. And the reason why staff included this as a condition of project approval was to allow the applicant an opportunity to design the project in such a way where they could maximize the benefit of replanting on the existing site. However, I do have some proposed changes to condition of project approval number three, which might satisfy some of the concerns of the applicant while maintaining the needs of the city that this particular condition is satisfied. And if you give me just one minute, I think I have some language that I can read into it. A tree mitigation plan shall be provided by the applicant and approved by the city administrator prior to the issuance of a grading permit or by December 31st, 2015, whichever occurs first. If the tree mitigation plan for past illegal tree removal has not been approved by December 31st, 2015, the conditional use permit may be revoked. The conditional use permit may further be revoked if the tree mitigation plan is not implemented by completion of the project. This way, we're opening up the tree mitigation requirements to say that rather than have a plan, a landscape plan, that they have to submit by the end of the year, they need to have a plan that outlines how they're going to comply with the mitigation requirements. And it has to be approved by the city administrator. We also want to reserve the ability to revoke the conditional use permit if by the end of the build-out of the project, they have not actually complied with the tree mitigation requirements.
Just for clarification, if the commission were to decide to allow the mitigation to be segmented by parcel, would the mitigation plan cover that? And would you need to include language about the completion of the project per parcel or completion of all four parcel projects? I would be unwilling to go with the latter on that one. Just as a personal comment.
Unfortunately, the Planning Commission does not have the ability to parse out the obligations on four different parcels at this point. And the reason for that is because the obligation or the lien is placed on the entire, could potentially be placed on the entire property. So in order to change that, it would have to go back to the administrative hearing officer or later appealed to the respective body. It's not, it's not within the purview of the Planning Commission at this point.
So for completion of the plan, does, does that mean that completion of the plan is following the completion of the construction? of the construction of the fourth parcel?
The completion of the mitig, I mean, in practical terms, whether the lots are, you know, divided or not, the replanting, you know, should come in the context of how the project, you know, the whole property is built out. I think one of the reasons why we haven't implemented the mitigation this time is that, you know, not knowing how the site would develop, we could plant a lot of trees out there and then having to take them back out once, you know, a development project came. So I think in, in practical terms, any replanting, you know, would come as the site is developed, regardless of it's divided into four lots or not. But, you know, Mona's point is well taken that we can't parse that out, you know, lot by lot here. There remains an obligation on the entire property.
But I think I also understand your question, Chair Lebig, which is when would the city be able to take enforcement action or potentially revoke the conditional use permit if the tree mitigation plan requirements are not complied with? And the way that I've just read the language, it's broad enough such that technically we wouldn't be able to revoke or have a revocation proceeding until the entire project, that fourth parcel, is completed. However, note that it would be a terrific liability for the applicant to have to develop four parcels and then come before the Planning Commission for potential revocation of two use permits if they haven't complied with the tree mitigation plan.
Could I say something? I find it difficult to believe that we would allow them to build two hotels and then, you know, if they never develop the fourth parcel or it's 20 years later, then try and revoke their permit. I mean, that just doesn't seem right.
Well, I don't suspect that the city administrator would even allow such a tree permit, excuse me, a tree mitigation plan to occur. Again, the tree expert would better know when the planting should occur. And I don't want to exercise my discretion over theirs in crafting any of this language. But I suspect that the tree plan will have some time parameters by which the trees need to be planted.
You know, I mean, I would be more comfortable, and I don't know what the rest of the commission is, but if you're going to allow this project to continue, they have to have a plan in place before you get your first certificate of occupancy. I mean, we're talking, it's going to take several months to build a hotel. I don't know how long it takes, but a year, year and a half. Before you give that certificate of occupancy on the first hotel, you should have a plan going.
The plan, the way that I read the language right now, the plan would need to be approved by the city by December 31st or grading permit, whichever occurs first. So at the very latest, you'll have that tree plan in place before the end of the year. And, and just as a, as a reminder to a point that I made previously, the city still does have the alternative remedy, which is going to court to seek an order compelling compliance with this because this was a separate code enforcement issue.
Pardon?
Just to follow up on that, at what point, just as, as the commissioner was saying, if they don't build, if they don't complete the fourth part, the building on the fourth parcel for 20 years, I mean, at what point does the city, is that going to be included in the language? At what point does the city go and get a court order enforcing the, the payment of the penalty?
We could go in tomorrow if we wanted to seek that court order. I think the point is that staff wants to cooperate with the applicant to, to allow them an opportunity to incorporate as many replanting options on the project site as possible, to have a win-win situation. First, the project gets the benefit of onsite trees as opposed to the payment of in-lufes. And secondly, they're not just going out there replanting trees on the project site to come back before you and ask, ask to have them removed in order to accommodate the footprint of the hotels that they want to build.
I'm going to take some people on my right first. I think I agree with that, that part of the statement though. I'm going to go Martha. Andrew, did you also have a comment?
I do.
Okay. I will go Martha, then Andrew, please.
If, if they, if there is a change in the court order and so the owners able to demonstrate that this order is erroneous and has it amended. And so there's a difference as to what needs to get done as a result of that. How is number, condition approval number three flexible enough to meet that amended court order?
Because the language says that the tree mitigation requirement, we're not putting in $183,000. We're not putting in the number of trees that need to be replanted or purchased.
Okay.
Andrew?
One of the actions we're being asked to consider is to subdivide this property into four parcels. And so I think my question for our colleague in council is, if we were to prove this action and then they were to sell one of those four parcels, how does the liability from the lien get spread out? Or say they were to sell all four? And, and if that's, if that's a consideration that we need to know upfront, then how would that play into how we should handle the question before us?
The purpose behind this particular condition of approval is to allow the city to cloud title on all four parcels until that particular mitigation is met. So the entire project, despite the fact that it's going to be divided, is going to be responsible for compliance until that's met. Once it's met, that condition is removed off of all four parcels. But until then, it remains.
Even if there was a change in ownership?
Yes, yes. And then that would be something that they would have to negotiate with the purchaser.
Thank you. Bernadette?
Yeah, so, well, first of all, I want to say that I really appreciate this project. I, I think it is going to be a really good economic development and opportunity. And I think that it will add to what's already out there, the existing retail and industrial areas that are out there. So first of all, I appreciate the, the applicants, you know, working on this project and, and the professional risk that goes along with developing sites. So that being said, I can't speak for my other commissioners, but me personally, the only thing I'm really hung up on is this particular mitigation issue. The, what's troubling for me is just, I realize that you weren't the party that, that, you know, participated in the tree removal, but you do own the property that has this. And you, as, as you, everyone's acknowledged, you, you came into the ownership of this property knowing that. It sounds like staff are more than willing to work on what I think could potentially be a, a plan that everyone can get behind. So I think, you know, we need to kind of keep in mind that this is a two-part process. One is a plan. You don't have to do these things by December, but you do need to have a plan in place that is approved by city administrators. That's something that I'm supportive of. And from what city attorney read, I'm supportive of, of her recommendation to the modifications to condition number three. The other piece I think that we are continuing to get hung up on is the mitigation itself, that it has to happen. And I actually share the, the perspective of several of my commissioners that have already expressed concerns that we want to make sure that this mitigation happens. This mitigation does not have to be a dollar amount, but it does need to be a mitigation. And I think that people generally want to have that in the form of, at least part of it, in the planting of trees. So, so I would, I would want to make sure that, that again, it's sort of ironclad. I think there's this issue of, well, you know, could this be pawned off on a future owner? Is this something that we could just punt forever? My sense, and then, you know, Mona, if you could clarify for me. If we, based on the way that you've read it, condition number three, they would need to create a plan and their conditional use permit could be revoked if they do not follow through on that plan. And that conditional use permit goes to the operations of the building? Is that correct? That they could not operate? I don't know. If you could clarify that for me, that'd be helpful.
Sure. You're correct. So there are two instances under which the conditional use permit could be revoked. The first instance is if a tree mitigation plan is not provided and approved by the city tree administrator at some point before December 31st, 2015. The other point at which the conditional use permit may be revoked is if the components of the tree mitigation plan are not complied with. And revocation would basically mean that the applicant has a hotel but can't operate it. Exactly.
Right, okay. Thank you. That, that's very helpful.
And Mona, though it won't be specified in the condition, the plan could include a schedule
Absolutely, yes.
For the planting of the trees, for example, which I think is what I'm hearing from the commission that they would like to see, even though we can't put it in the condition. That's more of a comment than a question, so.
Well, I can certainly add that to a tree mitigation plan including schedule of replanting or payment. Or a schedule of performance, absolutely.
Sounds like we have one more question or comment on condition number three. And then probably will try and direct us through the rest of the issues.
And for question number, for number three, could the plan be modified after December 31st?
If the, if the plan provides for a modification, presumably the tree administrator, you know, could approve a modification to it. But the, what they can't modify is the order from the hearing officer. That sort of sets the, that sets the objective. Now what we're trying to work out is how do we implement, you know, that objective in the, in the context of a development project, you know, where it makes sense. So that's, you know, this is where we're kind of, we're trying to balance here, you know, meeting this past obligation, you know, still yet in the context of this new project, give this developer some maneuvering room to, to implement this, but not also push this off, you know, forever either. So that's, that's the balance we're trying to get to.
I, I have a couple of just clarification questions that I'd like to get out of the way before we begin our own questions in deliberation. So I'll just start with staff. We're talking about two hotels, two different hotels. I heard one hotel's named Marriott. Or is it one hotel and it's broken up into two buildings?
Yeah, it's, it's two hotels. One is proposed to be Spring Hill Suites, 110 rooms. And the other is Courtyard, 82 rooms. But the, the flag of the hotel could change. It could change ownership. So you really, you're approving the, the room and the height?
And for one of the hotels, what we're voting on tonight is an adjustment for floor area ratio. And for the other is a height.
And then the hotel itself is a conditional use in its own also.
Okay, thank you. I needed that. Questions, comments? And I'll start on my right this time. Andrew?
A question for the applicant as to, I mean, you're coming before us with the request to approve both hotel projects at the same time. And perhaps outside our purview, I'm wondering to know, is the intention to build, to, to apply permits and build both projects at the same time? Or is there an order of operations here?
No, first we're going to build Spring Hill Suites.
I didn't even understand what you said.
He's going to build Spring Hill Suites first?
First.
Yeah, first Spring Hill Suites, yeah. That's right now, we have a franchise agreement in place and fees paid to build Spring Hill Suites. So we're preparing for the 30%. We're in negotiations with Marriott for the terms, conditions, and fees for the second hotel, if we go with that flag. There are other flags that are on the middle upper tier that would like to be at that site also. So we're still in negotiations about the second one. But we plan on breaking ground on the second one prior to completion of the, of the first Spring Hill Suites.
And if I could just understand correctly, because most of the building design standards are based on the flag you fly, you'll be waiting to have a franchise agreement before you decide to pull permits on the second building, or?
Yes, yes, definitely.
Maybe, my question, I guess, is are you thinking that the number, the $187,000 wasn't a correct number? Is that a question, or? I mean, you never want to be that.
That, that, that could be a question, and it is kind of suspect.
You know, but I mean, we as a planning commission can't do anything about that.
I understand that. I understand that.
So what would you like us to do? I mean, I'm just trying to figure out my own mind.
Just, just extend it to where we can divide it up into sections, you know, and, and to stages to, you know, do the mitigation 100%. I mean, we, we knew that going into this, we were going to have to mitigate it. But when the terms change from mitigating at the point of building permit issuance to December 15th, to prior to a grading permit, that puts a stop on a whole lot of things. Because the grading is going to be part of the determination of what the landscaping is going to be. We hadn't had plans, we didn't think we had to do a bus turnout, so that changed things, you know? So the street's going to change in design. And the way that it was laid out conceptionally is not the way that it came out once we had it engineered and designed, such as a circle. You know, that circle isn't there because we had to change the road because of the 90-degree angle of entering the lot, because Reed goes at an angle. So these are the type of things that come up in development. So to answer your question is, if we can phase it between the development of 25%, when the Spring Hill Suites, 25% when the Courtyard by Marriott or whatever flag is flown there, issuance of the building permit, 25% at the sale or the development of the, hopefully, four or five-star restaurant that we're trying to recruit there on the corner of Stillwell and Reed. And then whatever the use is for the, the retail use for the fourth lot. It would be ideal for us.
I'm not, and I've been doing this for a long time. I don't know if we have that right.
Yes.
I mean, I, that's really stretching because you may, God knows when it'll ever happen. I mean, that's really a discussion between Dina and David and you. I mean, I'm all for you, but I'm not sure that that's even within our privy. Mona may have to answer the question. I'm just not sure that we have the right to sit there and put something off for years and years and years. And maybe just one year and it could be 10 years. I mean, you know, and I'm not sure we have that right. And we're talking about money and dollars and, I mean, if you're replanning, it might be different than if it was dollars. I know dollars, we don't get to touch too much. We get in a lot of trouble as a planning commission. So, you know, I mean, I'm just a little concerned to change it from anything. If you don't have a plan, if you have an idea that's what you want to do, to me, you should be in talking to Dina and David and coming up with a plan, not coming here asking me to give you a plan because I don't have one.
Okay.
I, I believe that we've modified condition number three to allow for that. And I think that
Well, and I agree, Russ, but up to the point that when's it all going to happen? You know, I mean, you still have to have a cutoff that you have to have a plan in place or something before you get grading permits or before you get certificates of occupancy. Somewhere, you've got to have a plan.
Right. Has, I think that's been addressed, that we will have a plan in place by December 15th of this year.
Okay. And with the language about schedule in there, I think there's flexibility for phasing mitigation.
And I think that's well within our right to, to say that you could have phasing. I just don't know that you can phase it by the occupancy of the property. But that's not for immediate aside.
There, there are several issues in front of us, not just trees. We, we have to deal with the actual condition use permit for the actual hotels, the height for signage and a floor area ratio. So do you have any comments on those? So do you have any comments on those? I will.
You know, I'm glad you asked me that question, because signage, we had at one point in time talked about signage on buildings, and we like the signage to be on the building, not above the building. And I don't remember quite how all that came about, but there's no reason to put the signage beyond the building unless, you know, you had some demographics that you'd show me how it works. But I mean, you're coming off the freeway, you're up in the air, they should certainly be able to see your signage, I would think, on top of that freeway. So I, I, that was something the commission did a number of years back, and I don't know, Russ, if you were on then, when we talked about not taking the signage and just arbitrarily putting it beyond the top of the building. But that was an issue, too.
No, this is an arbitrarily just put-on the building. This is a part of Marriott's logo that's incorporated into a building of that size.
I think the concern was the, this is a structure that is being built, like a turret, for example, that would hold signage.
Right, right. Just incorporating in, in the facade of the building.
This has come up before, and often it, I know it's not treated as signage, but it has been the opinion of the commissions prior, that we weren't just changing the architecture for signage. But that is an opinion of the commission, and the commission can make that decision again tonight. Mr. Fong, did you have something that you wanted to say?
Excuse me. The signage, the signage on the building, it just, it was an element that was created, we created an element that was a little higher than the rest of the building, just to make it a, give it a significant, you know, entry signage for the, for the building. So if, if, if the commission says we can't have it, you know, we just redesign it. But at this point, we wanted, we wanted the signage portion of the building to have a little more significant look as the entrance, you know, to our building. So that's the reason why we had the, the element a little bit higher than the rest of the building, which was 65 along the whole building, except for that, that one element that we had it up at 65, 75.
Looking for sheet number H, letter H.
Yeah, there's a elevation sheet, sheet G, that, you know, illustrates the, the tower element that they're proposing, which may very well include signage, you know, at some point, which is not unusual to have a tower element on various types of buildings, and then include a little bit of signage up there. And so this is, you know, an integrated, you know, element to the building, although it certainly is a little bit higher, but it's not unusual, especially, I think, for a courtyard product. I think this tower element is fairly common in those, those hotels, if you see them around.
Yeah, basically, we wanted to have some elevation changes, so it doesn't look like one monotonous building. So that's why we had a little bit higher, and, you know, just to give it a little more design, you know, to the building. But if it's a preview of the, the commission that, you know, we stick to 65, we just keep the building all 65. We just wanted to give it a little bit more pizzazz to the building. And not only that, it's, and we created that as a sign element there, so it's not just arbitrarily, you know, stuck on there. It has some significance.
Bernadette, you have any comments?
No, I'm, I'm fully supportive of staff's other recommendations.
Wow. Okay. I will say, I, I appreciate the drawings.
Thank you.
They're, they're very helpful.
Thank you.
Oh, I had one more question. I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
I forgot. I'm not, I'm not sure if this is, this is relevant at the time, but do you have, just generally, I know you said that you're already in, in talks with the courtyard, and you're negotiating with them for that specific hotel. So Spring Hill's already established courtyard, we're not sure yet. And then I believe you, you're also proposing two restaurants on site?
Yes.
Do you have any negotiations or?
We're working with a lot of different restaurants, franchise. So far, we're still negotiating.
Okay.
Yeah. That's the city economic development, I forgot her name, she proposes, she wants a sit-down nice restaurant on the lot. So we're working on it. We want to bring a really nice restaurant there.
Great. You know, honestly, I'm, I'm, I'm just interested in kind of what the timeline is for the entire completion, but also we, we would like a lot more sit-down restaurants in West Sacramento.
We're working on it every day.
I do appreciate your efforts to bring us, bring us that. There is definitely a need for it. And I also just wanted to echo Commissioner Austin's comments, we really appreciate you bringing this project to our city. I think it's a beautiful project.
When we have two restaurants, we need, when we have two hotels, we need a restaurant. And we look around in West Sacramento, we do not have a nice sit-down restaurant. So we want to bring that to our top priority. I think Gerald, he's working on it.
Right.
We're working on it right now.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Okay. At this point, if there are no further questions of the applicant, I'm going to close the public hearing and bring it back to final deliberation. And Martha?
Just a quick question regarding the, regarding the elevation and signage. Have we, do we have a precedent of making exceptions for that? Or what, what is the history? I'm, I'm feeling like I'm missing out on some, some information here, based on what a couple of commissioners have said about that. And maybe there's a difference here with what is being proposed compared to what historically has, has been discussed and advised?
I can recall, you know, the commission has granted, you know, various height exceptions, you know, over the years for different types of structures. I, I don't recall one offhand for something that's, you know, directly analogous, you know, to this one. But all the cell towers, we've done it, there was the grade elevator down at Farmer's Rice a few years ago, and probably a few others, you know, over the years. But really, this is, you know, a building height exception. It's, even though it's been discussed for, you know, the desire to put signage on this location, the exception is really for a building, overall building height. Although we do appreciate that signage is being thought of up front and then designed into the building, rather than just sort of tacked on, you know, anywhere they can find it later. So that's a, that's a positive, you know, design feature. So we, we certainly, and this provision is in the Minnesota Code, we've, we definitely have granted several height exceptions over the years. So I just want to make a comment based on all the conversation around tonight. I spent a lot of time in this industry before I decided to make a career in public service, and one thing I, I know is that these type of projects have tight margins to make them work. And in this case, they are going to have even more difficult margin to, to finance this project based on, on the tree issue, which certainly wasn't their doing, but they, they took on full well knowing when they purchased the parcel. And so I want to, A, say thank you to the applicant for, for being here and providing the information. I think we've given a pretty robust discussion and come up with a, a more than reasonable solution. And I am perfectly comfortable with, with all of the pieces of the puzzle that are before us tonight, and at the appropriate time if you have to make a motion.
I think it was the appropriate time.
Second?
I did not make that motion. I didn't hear the motion either.
Oh, sorry.
I'm sorry. Okay. Please include the revised language for number three, or reference it.
So I'll move the approval of the, the four items with the change in condition of approval number three as read by counsel.
Moved by Mr. Sternfeld.
Second?
Seconded by Ms. Guerrero. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Tosed? Very none. Again, passes unanimously.
Any interested party may appeal the decision of the planning commission's matter to the city council by filing a written appeal with the city clerk within 10 days of tonight's action, and the appeal must be accompanied by the appropriate filing fee.
Thank you. Moving on to informal discussion, I have just a comment, and some of our more senior members on the commission may remember this project, but there's a storage unit on the corner of F and Jefferson Boulevard, and it came to the commission for a floor area ratio exception. It's three stories tall along Jefferson. Part of the discussion of that storage unit was softening that wall along the road, and it included trees. There was landscaping. In fact, they had previously planted the trees, and they were sycamores. One year after building the, the complex, they topped the trees, which, okay, you don't top sycamores, but it is what it is. And recently I've driven by, and the trees are gone. They have been completely removed. So I would request that staff look into those trees. What I don't remember is if they were included as a condition of the project, or if they were a discussion of, for approval of the project, and how the city would go about following up with that. I'm not sure about that.
Yeah, I'm familiar with the project site. I'm not, I remember working on that one, it was about two, circa 2007. I remember the topping issue at the time. Those trees are gone. We went over there earlier. They were there at least as recently as April, according to the Google Street View. About five of them along there that appeared to be quite green and doing well. Those trees were all but certainly part of their street frontage obligations, you know, which is sort of a standard requirement for parcel development, even though they don't have the typical frontage over there. So we are most definitely on this, and we'll be meeting with our code enforcement manager and tree, well, Dina, the urban forest manager, on Monday when she returns from vacation on this matter.
Thank you, David. Mr. Moore?
No, actually, I do have a comment, and I talked to David a little earlier today about it. If you get up on South River Road and you're by Linden, you'll see that they're starting to do a lot of grading in that back area and finishing off the subdivision that was previously approved. And I've had a couple of people ask me if the roadway was going to connect from Linden over to the McGowan Bridge and go through the subdivision, and apparently it's not going to quite do that yet. And then as David and I were talking, we were talking about things like Yarborough and the Richland property and the Pet property, that many of you don't understand have been approved, some of these have been approved, and some of them are running out of time on their approval, and some of them have lost land. And I thought that maybe at some future date, David might be able to make a little presentation and kind of update all of us, including myself, on what's going on with some of the projects, and how it's working out there, and how the Loop Road's going to connect, and maybe when some of this is going to happen. And I just, you know, as we were talking, we said it might be a good thing to have just an overview of what Southport's going to do.
I would be happy to do that, and we'll, we'll agendaize this, you know, for, at one of your upcoming, you know, couple of meetings. And then I'll be happy to, you know, give a little history lesson, and then what's happening now, and, you know, because there's quite a bit about to happen, I think, down there, so I might be happy to do that.
Mr. Sternfeld?
Just very quickly, I wanted to let my fellow commissioners know that I was somehow magically selected by the Sacramento Valley section of the APA to serve as the board and commission representative. Not just for West Sacramento, but for the entire region. So on their Sacramento Valley APA board, they have a commission or representative to represent the perspective of planning commissioners. And so you will be, like the flyer before you today about the upcoming mixer, you will start seeing a lot of information that they're asking me to push out. And certainly a great opportunity for all of us to maybe get more involved and use it as the true resource it is.
Congratulations.
Yeah. Is this a pain job, or?
No. All volunteer.
Motion to adjourn?